The other to order, excuse me. We are joined here with the planning commission. I don't know Diane if you want to pull your meeting to order.
Um, it's six thirty one and yes, we all ready? Okay, we're ready.
Excellent. Any agenda additions or changes for tonight?
Not for me.
No, no, great. Public to be heard. This is a portion of the meeting when folks in the community can bring comments, concerns, questions to the boards. In this case, planning commission and city council. I don't see anyone in the room. Is there anyone online that has anything they'd like to say or comment on tonight? If so, please raise your hand. Or if you don't know how to raise your hand, just leave your hand in the video or start talking. I don't see anyone.
No.
Ready to make any comments? So much like planning commission hasn't had.
Right, good, thanks. So, um, we have minutes. On your motion to approve the minutes.
I approve the minutes. Second.
Any discussion on it?
Yeah, I have a couple of small corrections. Page two at the top. Um, just a sort of semantics, um, instead of local churches next to places of worship. I'd like to put it closer. And I also have a comment on member updates. Um, that wasn't exactly what I said, but I'll try to clarify it later in the meeting if I can.
Okay. So you're feeling that then?
I'm okay with this.
I don't know. Um, all that you can say would be corrections noted?
I.
I think any of those? All right. We're down without one. So we're up to number five.
Moving right along.
Hey, I guess it wasn't going to take all that long.
All right, update on the Connected Junction TOD master plan. You have pursuing our community development goal here.
So originally, the, the plan for this meeting was for mostly to be focused on the Connected Junction uh, transit oriented developments, uh, draft plan. Um, but on January twenty eighth, uh, we, uh, were instructed to pause the project, um, because of federal funding uncertainties. Um, and as of today, that pause has not been lifted. Uh, so that's where we are today. Uh, this CCRBC says we are likely to, um, uh, hear more next week. So, yeah, I think this was, the pause was originally because of, uh, that O M B memo that said all disbursements are, must be paused immediately. And then that was rescinded. Uh, so the old challenge, um, but as a discretionary grant, this is, uh, the, uh, there still needs to be more clarification on whether or not, uh, the, the current administration, uh, is willing to continue with this, uh, this project. Um, that's all that I let it know at the moment.
Okay, so my question is that we have a preliminary report that you said you got. I was in our minutes from the last meeting. So if we have the budget because it's not getting paid for, can we move with what is available?
We should.
Or do we have to wait until we get the final part?
I, so actually what I had received was the, what they call the big ideas report, which is, which is one chapter of the, the draft plan. Um, it, there isn't actually that much to the big ideas, uh, report that, that you haven't already seen. It's just more elaboration on the, the kind of general principles of what, uh, the Connected Junction project was trying to achieve. Um, I, I have not seen the draft plan itself yet. Uh, I know they, the consultant was partway through, uh, making that and, you know, if if for some reason this project doesn't wake up again, uh, we could ask for what has been done. And, um, I think you take it in house to be said possible.
I'd also be curious to know how much would cost to get it finished if you were to mean to do that. If there's a way to there's a way to figure it out. I wouldn't necessarily start on that until we know, but, um, just be curious because really they put an awful lot of time and effort into, um, and stuff to, um, getting to this point.
The other, the other part of that is, were they being paid by R P C?
Well, the, the R P C was the, the, uh, the, the, the project manager for this, that, uh, that took federal funds to pay them.
And I mean, the parallel is, um, USA, for example, all the contractors that work for USA can't get paid. Um, they have outstanding invoices. So the question is whether they want to have an outstanding invoice that they can't get paid as well.
We don't expect that to be the case because there was, there was, uh, an order to stop work on a specific date and, and any work that was that was done before that, um, they're still open, right?
Well, yeah. I know, but yeah. So that, that's a bigger question. You might can answer it at this point.
Marcus.
If, um, if we don't get the funding, can you generally in top, you know, thirty thousand foot level summarize what would be worst case scenario if we could not move forward?
We would take the work that has been done, which is quite a bit of work, but it's, uh, already and we would, we, and, I mean, I guess, I guess there's there's a question of whether or not the city, the city might want to directly fund the rest of the project to, to wrap it up. Um, if not, if that was not possible, uh, we could take the product in-house and, you know, continue, uh, to the best of our ability.
And, and again, for, for residents clarity, can you, can you summarize what this is impacting? You know, what are the projects or what are the, what are the things that we're talking about that are being impacted by funding or not funding and whoever's doing it?
Well, the Connected Junction Transit Oriented Development Master Plan is a, um, is a policy document that, that will, that's supposed to shape uh, a lot of, you know, other regulations that's, uh, that, that the city, uh, is development in the city has to follow. So including uh, the land development code, our zoning regulations, uh, there's some direction about, uh, there, there's some stuff about what to prioritize, you know, capital investments in, um, so, and then there's a lot of what comes out of the T O D project, the, the Connected Junction project is meant to feed into the comprehensive plan and also another round of land development code amendments. So, um, yeah, we, we would need to take the product that, uh, has been created so far, try to refine it to a useful level, um, and make use of, uh, make use of that.
I guess I'll revise my question about how much it would cost. I'd be curious to know if not tonight for you and Regina. We don't have a lot of time for the budget. If it would extend into July into fiscal year twenty six, and if so, if it's worth discussing in our next two meetings, um, adding money to the budget just in case, um, or discussing where we might find it otherwise. I really am not loving the idea of letting this go. And I'm perfectly confident that it could be taken in-house and be done very well. Um, but I, that impacts already very tight capacity on our staff, um.
Well, in addition to that question, I would add, can we pay, if we pay for it, can R P C then reimburse us for the cost? So because it was coming out of their grant that they had gotten and therefore were not out um, that those monies.
Or is the state who's still in session right now and desperately wants this housing built, willing to kind of with an appropriation or help us, or how CCRPCs were the same boat, because I'm sure ours isn't the only one. Obviously, R P C is not CCRPC, but R P C is there.
That's, that's right. How many out there was like a half a dozen or better?
Um, yeah, the project is, um, affects ten different communities in the state, but the Chinatown County Regional Planning Commission is actually managing all of those.
That's okay.
Yeah, but so to answer your question, we can definitely look at what the remainder of that cost is if we have an invoice yet from framework up until this date certain last week. Um, and then, um, if I have enough information, I'll get it incorporated into the narrative before it goes out tomorrow. Um, otherwise I'm sure we can have it by Wednesday night to talk about it.
Awesome. So that makes sense to do. I guess the only other thing is maybe we can work on sooner than later, getting something rescheduled for six or eight weeks from now for all of us to do this again, hoping that it is scheduled. So if it is released, we can talk about it and we can not go through the trying to then schedule two months out for us all to get to be right.
So just a small detail, Chris, um, they were supposed to present their draft report tonight, correct?
That's right.
So one assumes that they do have some kind of draft report.
It's.
And the question is whether or not they can release that without getting paid, et cetera. So a, a, again, I mean, maybe having a conversation with them about what, what the product is at this point.
Yeah.
I mean, going back to the presentation they made to us, when, when was that December? Yeah, but there was, there was a substantial amount of conceptual detail in that, that plan. Um, so I, I would be curious to see what they have now.
Down to this one. Ready to go to the next one? Sandwich boards are favorite topics. Okay.
You too.
Hey, now we go, I was discussing on sandwich board. And to be perfectly honest, when I went and I read what's available online to tell us what the short uh, narrative is on what, when I went, oh, you guys pulled pulled the very piece of sandwich boards that we thought was going to be helpful and people could actually have the sandwich boards out on Pearl Street. They still have to pull them in at the end of the day. Um, we didn't pull that part. But at least have that door, the fifteen feet from the door. So the fifteen, I think a lot of we're gonna have a problem with the fifteen feet from the door, especially in the shopping center.
So that gets us to the point and I'll speak for myself. Um, you want to introduce this?
Yes.
Oh, that'd be missed.
So I, yeah, I just have, yeah, Chris has got a little bit that explains current regs versus what was proposed and then we can go from there.
Right. Um, so this is literally, it's just a screenshot of the existing regulations. It's in, it's in one, um, you know, just, just one paragraph and I'll summarize what, you know, what it says. And we can go back to this if you need to scrutinize the text. Um, and this is the, the, the proposed regulations, uh, by the planning commission from November twenty twenty four. Um, and this is second page and it's available to go back to if we need to. In summary, it's, uh, size limits are the same. Um, right, now it says, uh, businesses shall not co-locate, uh, sandwich boards, doesn't say how close counties co-locating, uh, as proposed by the planning commission, it says no closer than twelve feet from another sandwich board. Um, both say only during business hours. Um, right now it says maximum fifteen feet from, from door of the business and as proposed by the planning commission, it was maximum fifteen feet from the door, driveway or walkway of a business. And, um, we, and I will say, but the last point over here wasn't really discussed very much with the planning commission. I mean, I just, this is something that's, uh, this technicality I kind of, uh, uh, looked into more, uh, afterwards when it, when it came up as an issue, um, signs on publicly owned property for public notices are exempt. Um, and that was not included in what's, uh, the planning commission, uh, had submitted to city council. So from, by the direction of the city council, uh, there was some change made to this for the, uh, the version warrant for public hearing. Um, so basically turned the clock back and took out the driveway and walkway provision. Um, and I added the signs on publicly owned property for public notice is exempt. Um, then I put it back, but into the exemptions, uh, section of of the code. So, yeah, that's, that's what I have.
I, I'd be curious to learn more about your discussions around the topic as you consider this regular process.
Well, we had discussed fact that there's, there was going to enforce them on Pearl Street. Understanding that a lot of the people are putting signs out on Pearl Street because the businesses are going to what, two hundred feet or, or more from the street? So if it's only fifteen feet from the front door, um, that puts it out in the parking lot, you know, or where our people are parking, which is not really going to be really effective. I could see why somebody wants to have it on Pearl Street. Um, for neither, the shopping centers that happen to be there. So, um, I thought it was humorous when you had a gentleman come before us and said that the reason he wasn't bringing the, the sandwich board aside because it was too heavy. Of course, he's speaking to a person who hadn't pulled those sandwich boards in without dolly on a weekly basis. So, you know, I, I'm kind of like, you know, I, I think he could, he could do it. Uh, not an excuse I was willing to accept. But he at least presented it as the why he wasn't doing it. So but that was part of our discussion is how to get, I mean, it was, we're trying to be business friendly and we understand the reason they're doing it. Um, and we're essentially saying that now, and so my next question, who's going to enforce this? Okay, we have Regina and Chris going out there, um, Terry going out there to patrol at the end of the day. Um, oh, I realize our sidewalks roll up around seven or eight o'clock, but it's still moved. Um, going out there at the end of business and saying your sign's still here. Um.
I think that was going to be, so a couple of thoughts on that. I think I personally asked for this to be brought up because it, I think for a while, I think some of us felt that we simply didn't want. I think it can be business friendly and I understand. For instance, I counted from five corners intersection to the West Street tow handle. Fifteen feet taken into account, sixty to eighty possibilities. That's a lot. Now, we won't get all of them, but when you count all the businesses and all the possibilities on that one stretch, that's how many of it count up. I personally would love to see it removed and have a one or two year transition period where those landowners can adjust their signage. We think we, we made it so they could have two larger. So I'm thinking of, for instance, post office square. I think the new regulations mean that they can have the larger one. Now they can have a second larger one, not a slightly smaller one. So like my dog river, for instance, is around the corner. Um, and I get why they're concerned about visibility. Um, but those design of those strip malls is very old school. It's not designed we would do now. It's not something we would have now. We would have them street forward. So it brings up two things for me. I think we should transition them in. I think we have an economic development fund that we can explore having micro grants for the landowners to help them enlarge their signs over that period of time up to a certain point. I've got an option in mind and won't say no. And say, you know, this, this is going to sunset after a year or two. We're hoping that these businesses enlarge their signs. Um, the enforcement part, I mean, we have, we've had this for a long time. Either way, people aren't doing it. So having it partway, having it slightly available, people are just ignoring it. There's like, we eat out tonight on the air. Um, then we have the issue of whose, the fun conversation every now and then about when someone's open, when they're not. Um, I, I mean, if I, if I open a studio at, at post office square, I'll leave my sign in all the time because I have an online presence is the argument. That sounds like, you know, I've popped over to the Realtor on a, on a whim as a joke after being, being out for a night. They're not open at two in the morning, you know, like, so I'd love to see some kind of definition added to the, like, research around the definition added to the L B C of what open means. You know, for a physical brick and mortar business, um, because that just presents issues that are more than just a sandwich board when we try to you know, move forward as a city. Um, so those are some of my concerns around this, but I, I'm absolutely one hundred percent realizing that a lot of those businesses are tucked in here and there. But a lot of the folks that have these aren't, a lot of them are eight feet from the, from the road, you know, to the Gullikas, go to it. In Creston Connect here, Long Park Street, Main Street. You know, I mean, they're literally twelve feet from the curb. Do they need a sandwich board also on the sidewalk and your sign is, is right there, this kind of, and just the sheer number.
No, it depends on sandwich boards. Okay. Well, I, I'm feeling a damn good. But the thing is, is that they were initially supposed to be, hey, here's the sale for the day. Here's the sale for the week. Come on in. They were really popular when there was the, um, sales in April when um, the inventory tax was, was prevalent. It's gone away. But to drive people into saying, here's the sale, you know, um, because especially, let's say the uh, One Asia Market is in the back where backstage used to be. You don't see them. Even if they put a sign on their front door or the window, you wouldn't see it unless you actually went to their business. And I heard discussions about the V F sign because they too are tucked in the back. Um, you can see them from the road, but you can't really see them from the road, um, which you're really looking in there. So the purpose of having a sandwich board is essentially to say, here's the sale of the day, the sale of the week. And they transitioned to just being there at this point, which is what.
Yeah, I mean, if it was something like you can be out for seven business days a month, but some of the businesses on Pearl Street have turned it into a three hundred and sixty-five day year sale. And but I think that's the new method of doing business. They're probably set off all the time.
Right. Well, I, um, can you just clarify for me, Raj, is, is the goal of leaving that change to reduce visual clutter?
Yeah, I think we have. You know, it's interesting. When we did some of this work before I was involved on boards and I was heart and soul or, or, um, there was another one before that, Word and Junction, I can't remember the name of it. Someone had the interesting idea of going around to make a point and photographing similar approaches, but in small bits. And they asked the community on these giant poster boards, you know, where you think of this. A lot of people like, they were like, where is that? Right over there. It's Park Street, it's Pearl Street, some of these approaches that we have. And I think I think it's clutter. I think it impedes sometimes, and there's an attempt to mitigate that. I think it impedes sightlines. I think it impedes cyclists and walkers, but mostly it's visual, it's aesthetic, um, and clutter.
So I just want to point out that you know, we, we talk a lot about having an economic development effort of some kind outside of the large projects that we're doing. And there's not a lot that we currently do, if anything, for businesses. And when we start, well, we did that charette a couple of months ago and envisioned taking all the buildings at post office square and bringing them up to Pearl Street and like, or opening another building there. I mean, that's a really exciting proposition. But we do so little for our businesses that to take away the sandwich boards feels a little excessive to me. I mean, I know it's clutter, but, um, it's less expensive to have a sandwich board, having business, a business owner myself with a business that was far back from the road. I relied on my sandwich board. I changed the messages as often as I could. I put it on wheels so I could get it in if I needed to, like, you know, I, we needed it. And while it's cluttered on the road and yes, some businesses have counted into a three hundred and sixty-five day year sale, it's important. And like an organization like the V F W that, you know, that's all they use to advertise their chicken dinner or pancake breakfast or whatever. And
Oh, it.
Yeah.
And it's non-profit.
Right, they need it. So I really like, I get it. I totally get the aesthetic piece and we're working on that in so many different ways. I just feel like this particular issue, um, might be a lower priority and might be able to transition more as we develop more on Pearl Street. I just would rather not impose this on businesses at this time.
So it's the, the kind of, we're on your point, but like we we, and maybe the council doesn't have this problem, uh, the planning commission struggled to give, uh, uh, public input on everything we did.
Yeah.
Um, with the declaring exceptional progress register. That said, uh, as we have been working around this much recent tranche of updates, uh, to the L B C, the size of specifically sandwich boards has been the subject where we have received the majority, although it is, it's your credit, Raj. It is, we, it's not necessarily representative sample, but it is the feedback we're getting. Um, asking for leniency or flexibility around sandwich boards. Um, and so I, I bring that up simply to say, again, not this representative, um, but the people who are, is paying attention to what the planning commission is doing right now, the ones they're speaking out care about sandwich boards. Um, and so I don't know that I don't know what the solution is, but I do think it is important that we take the subject maybe more seriously than myself personally. Not a small business owner who would prefer not to see these sandwich boards would give the subject because the limited feedback we are getting is that it does matter to these businesses.
Marcus, got your hand up? Marcus?
Yep, um, so I, what I hear is a couple of different problems. I want, I just want to say out loud and make sure that I'm acknowledging. So what I hear first is concern that there are businesses that are potentially doubling up.
We lost, we lost our audio, Marcus.
It's probably not my audio. It's probably more like, so my apologies. I will do my very best. Um, but you've got a, you've got two problems. It sounds like one with businesses that are doubling up on their signage. So I'm, you know, I am A B C company and I put out a sandwich board that also says that I'm A B C company. Then you have the other problem of giving them the latitude when they have a deal or a sale or something that's going on in a moment, that they have the ability to promote that. I think what, what my concern is is somewhat similar to Elaine's in the fact that I feel like we're at a time right now with inconsistent, again, with rule that's been on the books with no real enforcement. We're moving forward and I, i- if we were to move, even moving forward, I think we question consistency in enforcement. And I think inconsistent enforcement is even more problematic. So I, I think this might be a period of time in which we can, I'm more inclined to lean toward how do we look at economic development in order to help solve some of these issues by bringing some means, but more likely education and assistance to businesses to help them do what they need to do in order to be successful in the city. Um, I also don't want clutter. I think there needs to be a balance. But right now my concern with the inconsistency of enforcement makes me feel like if we can't be consistent, then we shouldn't have it on the books. Cause honestly, people will just start to ignore it, right? Um, look at how, look at how we're dealing with political sides, right? There was a general understanding around this, which seems to be inconsistent from the rules, which has caused confusion. There has been inconsistency about this sign rule, even though it's been on the books. And so there are some who violate more egregiously than others. Um, and I, and you know, it goes to a bigger discussion that I think some point we need to have around how enforcement works in the city. What is the priority of that enforcement? What is the priority of that enforcement? I mean, we have talked about, you know, and I don't wanna dive into the rental registry, but in that discussion talked a lot about how the fact we needed somebody in community development to help start to enforce those building rules, those codes to, you know, doing that work as we're trying to rejuvenate and revive this community. And we don't have that. So we're not doing a very good job enforcing a lot of rules. This is just one of them. So right now, I I'm, I would say that I'm again, leaning toward how can we leverage uh, our ability to educate and support the community to be successful.
Amber, anything?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what Marcus said, but I think that my, my focus would be on, on the economic development and trying to, trying to give some education to folks about marketing their business, because I do feel that a lot of these signs are doing exactly that, you know, when is the chicken, when is the chicken barbecue? Um, it's not, i- it is not the, uh, the case usually that it's just an advertisement to find the, the location like the dog rumors. That's, that's probably the exception to the rule in this conversation. Um, and I agree with, with what you said, Raj, about the hours of operation. I mean, I've noticed two separate businesses in the city who leave their open signs on, and they have sandwich board signs out. Um, I think the last thing I'll say is that I, I also, from my, from my perspective, it is the aesthetics. Um, when we went, when Chris went through and did that first round of just kind of telling folks, you know, this is on the books and you gotta put it away. It was just a very different feel and, and look and feel when you drove down Pearl Street and saw all those signs put away. And I do think that a significant amount of businesses are complying with that rule at this time. There are some that just never complied with it and are never going to comply with it until it's not on the books. I think a happy medium would be balancing, I don't know if we could do a sunset, you know, to say, well, let's do the rule as, as proposed by um, the PC, and you know, leave it on the books for two years, which will allow us the ability to develop that community, that um, economic development committee. And then at the end of those two years, we should be in a very different position, so we allow it for now. But with the understanding that this is the goal to get there.
Yeah, I think those are all really valid points. I think I absolutely agree about the economic development, you know, we've been wanting to start that for some time. It's just not there on the list yet, for various reasons. This group has talked about it a number of times. There's hopefully some volunteers who are gonna start getting together. Um, we really do need to get that going. I am, again, also proposing that we, if we're gonna sunset it, and if we're gonna do something different, that we figure out a way to help the property owners that own the signs, the real signs, so they can make those changes, because those aren't gonna be cheap. Um, you know, if we did something like ten percent of your cost or up to a thousand dollars or whatever it is, out of the economic development penny that we have now, which unfortunately is here, because I was spoken for, but um, that is gonna, that topic is coming back down, because once the assessment's done, we have to rebuild that amount. So I'm open to absolute, like, it doesn't have to be the way I'm saying. But I would, I feel very, very strongly about the open hours, trying, trying to find a definition and trying to really kind of, you know, if we're not gonna do it all, then let's prioritize the businesses that are hidden, you know, so for instance, if you're a business in McGillicuddy's building twelve feet from the road, maybe there's no sandwich board there. If you're um, Asian Market and you're behind and you don't have a street front engine, even though, you know, then, then yeah, then maybe that is good. If you are a certain distance away from the door, but I, I'd really love to see an effort made or a deadline put on it for, to make sure we're gonna put that effort forward as a city and really start working with them to find a better solution. You know, I, I just don't see as many of them when you go to other communities, and we just have these we all, I think we drive through the community and walk through and bike through the community, and we don't see often. I think when you start to walk the community more, you start to see more, but it, these are we have these areas that, that really need a lot of help, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping that the rules we're putting in place, all the work you did as a group is gonna start bringing some of those changes. And I just feel like leaving these out there at the amounts that were, that are available, that are possible, have undoes some of that.
So I, I don't agree with what you said. However, I am trying to have, as, as the committee is also trying to do, is to try to get some economic development done by a land development code. Whereas we should be having economic development done by an individual or someone in the community development department to help businesses. I know we haven't really had, and I know Greg Morgan was on here, and he seems to have disappeared. Um, but he had, was the last person I knew that was on the economic development with. Um, and I'm not sure who was on with him, but it was not a large number. So how do we work with our businesses? Okay, I mean, we can impact them and do the rental registry, and they can flood you with information. Or we can actually be proactive and say, this is what we'd like to accomplish, and this is what I have. We, we need you to tell us what is working for you and what's not working for you, because this is what's not working for us, and we want to see something change, and we need help from you to have this occur. But there's no one that I'm aware of um, in Chris's department that's stepping up to fill that role. So how do we get this done?
Say, has the capacity to take on that role.
Or, or has the capacity, yeah. So Marcus, please jump in.
I'm trying to get something in here, sorry. I wanna come back to a couple of things I heard um, from Raj and Elaine. Um, when we did the strategic plan, I volunteered to go around and canvass our businesses to try to get them to the workshop. So I talked to almost every business. I didn't go up Pearl Street, but you know, I didn't wanna go to McDonald's and talk to the owners, but I did get them five corners and I talked to a lot of the business owners. And um, the person who owns um, the liquor, liquor depot next to Rocky's, um, Duncan Harvey. Um, he and I had a conversation, and um, also I've talked to Jake, um, Jake Tron about this as well. Is, the thing that's missing is, we're assuming, like everything we do, we're assuming everything has to be directed through city staff, okay? That puts an enormous burden on city staff. What I think, and Duncan and I talked about this, I think what we need to do is look at trying to mobilize volunteers who can be the lead on this. One of the problems we have in Essex Junction and the Five Corners, we have a lot of really unique restaurants, for example. Maybe too many bakeries, but that's another point. And we just lost one, McGuaymo's is our business. And that was the one twelve, the Filipino restaurant in Chinatown, maybe in the state, and they had great food. Nobody knew about. When I talk to people in Shelburne, my friends in Shelburne and Chinatown, other places, nobody knows about these restaurants. They're coming back to the signs. Uh, we, we spent an enormous amount of time on signs. I think probably two meetings, and it's not just sa- sandwich boards, it was everything. There's probably violations of people in window signs, you know, their windows are supposed to be one of those, I can't remember, twenty-five percent covered, okay? If you walk down um, Railroad Street, that is, that's in violation. There's a couple places in violation. So the question is, you know, this thing about enforcement, we can enforce everything. It, it, it's just, when this comes up on the sandwich board, it becomes public information and then you enforce it. But the point is, I think we need to think a way to mobilize volunteers more effectively. Um, not just assuming everything has to be done by the city staff, because that's enormous workload on them. Um, and there are people, older people who have gone, you know, who are retired, who can volunteer for the stuff and mobilize people. The other problem with businesses, those people are, are stretched. They're always working. And Jake will be very happy to communicate with you at the coffee shop. But he's got three businesses now. You can't expect him to volunteer time, but there are people who will volunteer. It's just a question of finding them. And then your economic development committee can prosper, and you can get people together. But this thing about signs, you don't need sandwich boards if you have a good communication out and marketing outreach, and, and they don't. There's no church feed, church feed marketplace for Five Corners. There should be a five corners marketplace, so that people know what's going on. And, and I think Duncan's willing to help, you know, he's willing to volunteer some time. We could just mobilize some of these people, we could get some ideas together, and that might be a transition to, you know, not having to have sandwich boards anywhere. And one last thing, I, I do agree, I think the, the businesses that are five feet from the street, they don't need a sandwich board. You know, they've, they've got, they've got their front right there. McGillicuddy's doesn't need a sandwich board. But VFW, that's a different, that's a different matter. They're not visible from the street.
And again, you know, I'd say, I think Marcus is right, and I, I think those are great ideas. I think there's also
That's, that's, it's part of the comprehensive plan, it's a longer discussion, but we need to mobilize the advantages and the, that, and the promotional things of Five Corners and Essex Junction. It's not getting out there. People don't know about it.
I don't, yeah, and I'm not even talking about Five Corners, this is, this is the outskirts of the, you don't actually see them. There's one, I think down there. Well, Marcus, there's a few, yeah. Yeah, well, I consider that, I, I mean, I'm thinking that's further out, but.
Please, Marcus, go ahead.
So I'll just, I'll just add in, because I've, I've had this discussion before, and I've thrown this idea out in uh, other conversations, but um, you know, as I, as we've had the discussion around housing, um and I, I say this because of the fact that I think some of the same players are involved. That we're talking about the business owners of commercial properties in the city, or we're talking about housing in the city. Um, I wonder if it wouldn't be, um prudent to have a discussion as to whether or not it would be a good idea for a subcommittee between the council and the planning commission to potentially get together with developers slash business owners to talk about some of these kinds of issues. Um, to see if we can collectively work together, come up with some ideas that would support the business community um, and support our objectives as, as the city.
It's an excellent idea. Are you volunteering to lead it up, Marcus?
I, I would, I would be willing to participate as one of the, I don't know, five or six ones that I'm on right now, sure, why not? I, I, you know, look, I'm not trying to volunteer people right now, I'm just, again, throwing out an idea, because if we're talking about an economic development volunteer committee, we're talking, you know. I think one of the things that we should discuss around these things is, do we get the stakeholders, you know, to Scott's point? How do we get the stakeholders to the table? Um, and sometimes it, it it may take community leaders to do that. Um, and so I, I'm just, I'm not saying we have to, we obviously don't have to decide that right now, I'm just kinda throwing that out there as a thought, as one of the ways that we look at, again, educating and working with the community to try to look at these things and improve upon it, because, you know, to Raj's point, yeah, I also want to try to work with these commercial owners, um, to see how, if there's a way to support them to promote those businesses. So, look, we can attract people to come into the community as well as, um, help those businesses be more successful. And, you know, this idea came to, to me, because as I was reading through the LDC in consideration of this, it was not particularly clear to me either, who was the responsible party if there was a violation? Is it the business? Is it the owner of the property? In some circumstances, I have, you know, I have seen regulations that, you know, it would be I'm not saying within our community necessarily, but I've seen this applied in such a way that, you know, the owner of the property were responsible for these kinds of things, because you want them to be educating their, you know, their renters, their leasees. Um, but I've also seen it the other way. So, you know, that was one of those pieces that I did not have clarity in, in reading our our regulation here. So I, I don't know if we need to add that, I just wanted to mention that as, again, we're trying to bring these people together, trying to find solutions to this that is you know, that works for everybody to try to get to a point where this community looks, feels, and is prosperous in the way that we expect and want it to be.
So, um, to answer your direct question, Marcus, for the most part, landowners are responsible for, um, meeting the zoning regulations. I think it's very clear, we definitely need to address an economic development program at some point in time. It's on the list, it needs to get fleshed out in the list. Uh, whether that happens through the comprehensive plan or some way that we can figure out how to do it sooner than that. Um, we, we will get there for sure. Um, super appreciate the idea that volunteers can do it, and it shouldn't all be on us. Big fan, like that concept. Um, uh, with the exception of it is very hard for me to believe that there wouldn't be any draw on staff, and our current situation is there is no capacity with the list that we have in front of us and the number of projects coming our way. Um, so I, I think, um there are a number of different things that will come into play to figure out, uh, what's the right economic development future for us. And some of this also is tied into what happens with the state designation programs and how they're reworking those. There's kind of a couple whole different things going on there. Um, so, uh, we hear that very clearly, we got it on the list, we will get it sorted out. Tonight, we need to make a decision about what's happening with these sandwich boards. Um, uh, and it's, it's a little bit interesting to me, because, um, particularly with the Church Street example, there are nothing but sandwich boards walking up and down Church Street, so just um, a, you know, business helping committee is not mean, equate itself to no sandwich boards. Um,
Like, we Church Street, but
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I was, I was gonna say Church Street, Essex Junction, I think.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Um, okay, so, uh, I, I think we've got a couple of different pathways here. We can stick with the sandwich board regulations that are in place currently in the land development code. We can switch back over to the planning commission's amendments. Um, we can try to do something, um to address two particular topics that I've heard. One is, can we define when a business is open? Um, maybe, we can think through that. Can we create the regulations so that sandwich boards are only allowed for businesses that are a little bit more hidden? Chris and I have spoken about that. It is a little bit difficult in the world of content neutrality. Because when a landowner, who is the responsible part, party, comes forward with a zoning permit for a sign, we need to be able to read the sign to tell whether it's a business in the back or it's a business in the front. Um, so it's a little bit, it's a little bit complicated. Uh, and we would have to do some more research to figure out whether there's some other time, place, or manner way of actually achieving that.
Specifically, that probably won't work for the, uh, uh, the VFW situation, because that's actually kind of an off-site sign, they're borrowing space from the, the, the They're borrowing space from the bank property, basically. So it's basically banking, like, all right, you can put, the landlord with the bank, you could put your sign there. And unless you can look at that, unless you can determine whether or not that's permissible based on the content, that's, you know, I don't know how to regulate that.
One question on that, just to be clear on what you're saying. So, for that example, I would imagine it doesn't really matter on that three-lane exit, what side of that is on. Let's pretend it doesn't matter to them, because we haven't asked them. If it's on the opposite side from the bank, it's their landlord's land, just like it's the landlord's land for Verizon across the street. Putting it 200 feet away on the sidewalk, basically. So I guess I'm not understanding why, yes, if the bank owns that lot, that's different. I guess it's a different. But if their own landlord owns the same property, that's what everybody else is doing right now. Domino's doesn't own that mall, so they're putting, if they were to put a sign out, it'd be on their landlord's land across the park. So why is that different for the VFW? If that makes any sense.
Well, I'm saying, I guess, maybe it is ultimately the same, but like, from my perspective, I'm not sure there's a way to regulate either of those situations without stepping in a content neutrality. Because if the bank is allowed to put a sandwich board out there, they could also.
I mean, it sounds like a place restriction as opposed to a content restriction. But I don't know.
So it's either sandwich boards are allowed there or sandwich boards are not allowed there. That would be the simplest, cleanest way to do it.
So while you're thinking about sandwich boards, what about the forever signs for realtors? That this place is for let, and there's absolutely nothing for let in the mall. You know, have a sign out that says, this is X, Y, and Z. Real it, you know, call me. Well, that's nice, but it's 365 every day, all hours of the day, those signs are out there. Recently, you know, it's been, gosh, I guess, there's two or three signs, those realtor signs in front of a local business that just moved out last week on Pearl Street. And it's kind of like, I was undecided if they were renting, you know, car spaces for a winner, because they've done it, or is this renting the place or buying the place? I was unsure as to what exactly was going on, because the signs are out there, 365 on. You know, it's kind of like, okay, so what do we do with those two? I mean, they're just as a fence as this. And it's the sandwich boards, because they're, we're talking about clutter. We got those two.
That is actually regulated separately. There's a different line in.
I know.
In proposal.
It's reinforcement for it, I know. Okay, so, but it's, you know, for our tag things, those equally are as cluttering as as sandwich boards. So, I mean, Amber, you got your hand up.
You can finish, Diane.
Okay, so I mean, I'm looking at more of, easy to say, but I think we need to, I miss the Essex Business and Professional Association that was there when I moved in. They at least had contacts and interactions with their members. A lot of everybody would remember, but they at least they had their membership. So I'm thinking we need to do something for our businesses because we're we're gonna tread their toes, we're gonna kick their shins, and we're gonna say, you're not doing anything for me. And we're gonna have to say, you're right, but we're trying to, you know, declutter the street. So how are we, we need to work together to work this out? Because it's not, I mean, I don't think we can have anybody out there constantly at the o'clock saying, darn, sign's still there. You're closed, it's no wind. I mean, it's just like, come on. I mean, their signs are dark and the sign's still out there.
I guess I don't quite get that logic. You know, that we don't enforce anything. We don't enforce traffic laws 365, 24/7, but they're enforceable and it's convenient to be enforced.
Well.
So.
How many people have you seen pass you at five corners?
They're enforceable and it's convenient to be enforced. So when it's not convenient to be enforced, the enforcers are doing something else at that time for life, or they're not being enforced. Amber, you ready?
Well, Gina, I was just gonna ask what your thoughts were on the whole sunset concept.
I think it's probably workable. I think South Burlington used a sunsetting approach at some point in time for some sign issues. It was not specific to sandwich boards, but it was essentially what signs they were allowing on, I want to say Williston Road, but it could have been citywide. So, I would say, though, I think the sunset was not two years. The sunset was, I think, I'm making all this up, but I think sort of a much longer time period, like 10 years. But that's because they were permanent signs, I believe. And so it were sort of, they were intending to let the businesses kind of change over. And as the new businesses came into place, then they would realize that they should switch over to these other signs. So I think it's a possibility for us to look into that. The, yeah. The enforcement of sandwich boards is going to remain difficult. I will say, no matter what we do.
If you want.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, Gina. So is our goal with this meeting to try to nail down something for Chris to basically come back to both committees? Or what is the goal of this meeting, I think, is one of the questions that I have?
Good question. I think if by chance there was clarity, we could, in theory, introduce that concept at the council's public hearing for the Land Development Code amendment and introduce it into this. And then set a second council public hearing. If this is gonna require some more effort and research for Chris, we probably will move forward with the Land Development Code amendment as warned by the council. And this will kind of be with the, we'll sort of slot this for the next round of LDC amendments. That's my take. Chris?
I was just gonna say the same. Like, if there is no desire for like an urgent change to this, basically, at this point, any change to the warned version of the LDC amendments will result in one more month of a debate or two. I mean, unless there are other things that needed to be changed anyway. And there's always gonna be a running list of things that need to be addressed. And there could even be drafted versions ready to go. And that can be prepared for whenever there's a next round of LDC amendment, which I would imagine, you know, has to come from the TOD project and also the comprehensive plan within the next year or two.
And just to clarify, as it is born right now, it is pretty much the same as it was before with the clarity around what to close proximity being 12 feet. Correct? And the goal of the Planning Commission's amendments were to allow essentially the VFW's sign or other signs that were further from the entrance for these businesses in the back that are further from a right-of-way or public view, and to make that allowable and not something that the staff should be enforcing. But I'm just wanting to clarify the scenario.
Sort of. So I think the VFW trajectory, it's a more complicated case than was really being addressed.
Or shares.
But other, so other businesses that are, let's say, businesses that the shopping center, the big lot shopping center, if they wanted to have something by Pearl Street, as the planning commission proposed that.
The Asian market.
Right. Right, as the, as a version that was recommended by the planning commission would have allowed that because it was fitting even within by the driveway or walkway. The VFW sign, first of all, it was always too big to fit this category. It was left out by the time, even when it was closed. So I'm not sure that would have been solved anyway. Unless they, I mean, I suppose they could put a smaller, a little one, a normal sandwich board and drag it on. I mean, it would be associated with the bank. I don't.
But I mean, either way, either version of the what existed prior and the proposed regulations that we hold on, for them, the concept of having to bring it in is the same. So that isn't changing with any of them. They're not supposed to be out all the time. And so if we're not gonna change anything, and we're gonna go back to what they proposed, what the planning commission proposed, I'd like to at least address this concept of like, business hours, bringing them in and try to get some random, more communication education. I think you and your department did a very good job of getting out and speaking with business owners, providing literature, doing that outreach. I'd rather see more of that than a ticket, you know, just reminders. But if somebody's like, just ignoring us, then sure, there's an enforcement. So I'm not too worried about the enforcement. I hope the enforcement looks more like what's been done today, you know. But for those that just leave them out or are just not gonna respond, then yeah, I mean, just like everything else, there's attempts at mitigation and enforcement.
Your turn.
Oh, on the VFW, I never took the VFW case as an example of what we were talking about here because of the nature of that sign. But I do want to acknowledge that, Chris, I really did appreciate your response to the community when there was some outcry about the VFW. I thought it was a really great response, really acknowledging how we want to work with the community, acknowledging how we, you know, again, are just trying to do our very best to create a great community. So it was really well done and more of that is gonna be greatly appreciated in the future. And I'm gonna bring this up just because I don't want to lose this while we're talking about signs, but I did have a question in regards to a line in the LDC regarding the electric changeable, electric signs with changeable messages. There is on page 198 of the LDC, section five, this is chapter seven, section 714, number five, letter D. It says, can only consist of alphabetic or numeric characters on a plain background and should not include any graphic pictorial video or photographic images. And I read that and I was a little concerned, only the fact that it seems like that going into play, CVE would be in violation, potentially in violation of that, if I'm reading it correctly, based on what I have historically seen, the kind of images that I see come up on their sign. And I don't know if this, if this language has, if this is new language or if this is language pinned here, that, again, we, maybe we haven't enforced it or whatever, but it's here.
Just gonna say, that is an excellent question and we can research that and get back to you, Marcus. That's how it's worn for the public hearing and we should address that at the public hearing. This is specific to the sandwich board conversation tonight and we gotta stay focused and get an answer here.
We can't.
She's getting so much better.
We can't say, just so I understand, content neutrality, we can't say nonprofit or tax exempt businesses are exempt from the sandwich board sign, laws, however we come out of it.
Absolutely correct.
We cannot say that.
And you're also saying we can't.
So we can't say that the sandwich board that's attached to the sign at St. James Place on Lincoln Street isn't in violation, even though we've decided not to enforce signs on places of worship. And we can't say that the real, that's what I was told when I inquired.
Churches are a entirely different ballgame when it comes to land's regulations.
Okay, it's fine. So we're at the, can we say businesses off the street or rear-facing? Like, the 159 complex has a sports card guy down the back. Can we say those businesses not on the street side? Which, I mean, I would include it if the VFW, right? It's not on, it's tucked in the back corner. Those businesses can have a sign not to exceed one per complex? And then they could thumb wrestle over it with the landowner. Maybe they could rotate through them.
Then we, let's pick on one of the Pearl Street. Let's have a sign, let's hold the businesses on their sign as your post office square. Thing is, is that unless you know that the Asian market is in the back, you don't know.
Right. No, I completely agree. And the other thing I want to take.
Or any of the businesses upstairs above, above the post office or near the school.
And.
You don't know what's up there.
Right. And so I was hoping to strike some sort of compromise between, I don't want to visually see that, and holy crap, there's a whole lot of businesses that are leaving Essex Junction. And I don't know if the sandwich board would help them or not, but it can hurt them.
I guess we need to move this on. I could, I don't think it's gonna be solved tonight. I think, again, I'll reiterate, for me, I'd like to see a definition of open and closed. Or I don't, to move forward with any of these for me. And I'd like to, I don't think we're gonna figure out in time for this revision anything that needs a lot of research. This kind of like there.
Yeah, and I think, Tim, those are great questions, and I think we can try to do some more research and see if there's some kind of creative way to make it a real, true time, place, and manner regulation that we can enforce in some way. I think it's gonna probably take a lot more searching. We may, and I don't want to say that Chris hasn't thought about this already, because he has, and so we may not get to a different place than we've gotten to already, but it's possible. And, but that's gonna take some time.
Respectfully, the open and closed seem like a very important issue to resolve. That doesn't seem like something that should be a rider on a sandwich board decision. To me, that just feel like that should be something that is in the next tranche of LDC amendment updates. And I don't know, clearly we're not gonna be able to decide on something tonight.
Or to add on to that, Elijah, is open and closed, should that be in the LDC? Or should that be an ordinance from the city as opposed to, because I mean, a lot of things have been thrown into the LDC and they really should be a pre-standing ordinance. So, and we were trying, we're trying to get that LDC to do just about everything for us, and sometimes it.
Oh, I agree. Well, then the question becomes, is there anything? In the way that seven fourteen is written in this respect, that would contradict any ordinance that were. One day could possibly, probably no time soon. Put in place. I haven't read it in three weeks, so I don't know.
So that was advocate is if we leave the LEC seven fourteen, the way you guys left it on January twenty-second. We're, we haven't, we haven't really gone forward, but we haven't really gone backward. We're sort of. Similar to status quo, but not quite. Um. Chris, can you live with it until the next time we?
I certainly can.
Okay, I mean, you know, it's, you know, can the city council live with the fact that the streets could be cluttered with sandwich boards and continue to be there? I I'm just trying to say, hey, we can, we can kind of move on, or we can just say, okay, how can we solve it?
Uh, my hand was up probably ten minutes ago in in an attempt like you were trying to do to kind of bring it back. To, you know, after an hour of discussion, I think we're, we're at the same spot. We just don't, we don't know where to go. And, you know, the reason I asked the question of Regina was to try to get to the point here. I don't think we're going to resolve this tonight. So based on what Regina said. My, my basic motion on the table would be to leave it as it's previously warned. Which includes the current, the current regulations, to my understanding. And we continue to have this discussion and allow staff to do research and such, but we're, we're not, we're not there. We're not there.
And I would say the open and close um. Uncertainties don't, i- it's not a very common problem. Like there, we have maybe. One or two businesses that try to stretch the definition of what's, what's open, but for most retail businesses, it's. It's pretty obvious when they're closed too. So if this, if that, if clarification on what is, what is really defined as open, like the definition of open hours. Is punted to the future, I don't think it would have a huge impact immediately on the option.
Yeah, the idea for me, I remember was not to create more work that required research. And hours of community development time to find a solution to.
Okay. Sounds like there's. Consensus with what Amber said.
Yes.
Looks like one. Next one.
Next topic.
Oh, wait, that's even better. Comprehensive plan. Yeah, we're having so much fun.
So. In your packets, there have been a lot of, uh, there, there's a, there's a slide deck in there with some. General information on, on the, the statutory basis of, uh, of, uh, comprehensive plans and how, how. Like what they act, what, what it actually does and how it's updated. Um, I don't need to go over the, the text that you can read through, but uh, I will. Move forward to the parts that affect uh, uh, the city's process the most right now. So. There are parts of the comprehensive plan that have to be there. Um, this is. The, the, the list of, uh, the topics that have to be covered. Um, and there can be topics beyond that. The plans expire every eight years, so that means the existing plan is, um, I mean, I think I say that's a here. Let's see, yeah, the existing plan is good until August twenty twenty-seven. The, the FY twenty-six work plan does, uh, includes a project to update this comprehensive plan. Um, and I am wanting to, um, apply for municipal planning grants to, uh, to expand the scope of that. To be able to do a little more public engagement, but in the draft budget, it's ten thousand dollars, which will barely cover. Cover the, uh, the, the cost of technical assistance that we would need to just update some charts and, and do some data analysis. Um, so to really do a good job, we would need the, uh, the municipal planning grants. So, let's see. Yeah, so, so, so this comprehensive plan, um, it is supposed to impact, uh. How the zoning and subdivision bylaws are, are written, um, and, and so that has to be a response to the comprehensive plan. There are other flood hazard bylaws, local and local ordinances, things like that, right, uh, that be implemented as. In, in response to, uh, the comprehensive plan update. And then there's also stuff about. Again, there are also ways to implement the municipal plan, um, through non-regulatory measures, um. Like just investment in capital. And also, how does this relate to the community vision and strategic action plan that was done last year? Um, I think there are kind of two levels to the strategic, uh, the strategic action plan and community vision. The community vision definitely is. Super high level statement above the comprehensive plan. I think there are strategic. Then there, there are these strategic actions that could be slotted in and integrated with this, this, uh, updated, uh, comprehensive plan. And. The, yeah, this is, this is what the strategic vision, this is what the vision was, uh, that came out of the last year's work. And, and I, I'll, I'll read this out because I think it is really important that, you know, keep this in mind, uh. Some, some of what was written here is intended to, to go into the comprehensive plan. The city of Essex Junction will be known for its inclusive and welcoming ethos. As a result, the population is both economically and ethnically diverse. The economic approach is community-led while strongly focusing on adapting and growing as a community. Community connectivity is significant in relation to amenities, activities and engagements, as well as, uh. Practicality via cycle lanes, trails and public transportation. Walkability and cycling are encouraged, and there are passive and active green spaces within the city. Inclusivity and equity are demonstrated via affordable housing, vertical development, incentives and new businesses. There is investment in, in the public good and shared amenities and resources that creates, uh, desirable living conditions. There's a focus on community vitality across the city with vibrant amenities and activities. The enviable location is attractive to people wishing to move to the city due to its amenities, characters. Sense of community and proximity to the airports, Burlington and New Orleans, people of Vermont. So, and anything that's, that is written into the comprehensive plan, at least in theory, should kind of reflect it. Um, and these are the strategic pillars, uh, that were ranked in, in terms of importance. For action over the next five years. So from that, I'm thinking that the comprehensive plan update, uh, there, there are five topics of focus that's, uh. That's, uh, which is spend time and energy on, um, housing, uh, future land use map, uh, the energy plan, economic developments. And transportation connectivity. So. And housing is going to be, you know, continue to be a, a, a big topic, uh, for many reasons, and, you know. And, and this is a part of it. Uh, the state just released a new, um, statewide housing needs assessment. And this housing needs assessment, um, is feeding into, uh, statewide and regional housing targets. The regional housing targets were actually just released a few weeks ago. And those, uh, each regional planning commission is breaking them down, them down into, uh, municipal. Goals, basically, uh, municipalized housing targets, and this should be available by mid point twenty-five. Uh, comprehensive plans, uh, are, you should, should demonstrate an effort to, to, uh, work towards these housing targets. And if, from the, from the housing needs assessments, you know, these are some, some. Top level, uh, numbers that's, that we're contending with, um. Thirty-six thousand, uh, uh, homes needed in Vermont between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-nine, these are new homes. And there are many pieces of that, you know, if you just achieve. You, you just, two thousand would just, two thousand two hundred sixty-nine would just achieve replacing lost homes and so on. So to, to really, um. Take care of, uh, and address the housing crisis, this, this number is pretty high. Um, and the current, uh, rate of housing construction in Vermont is well below the five to seven thousand homes needed, uh, per year to meet demand. You've probably seen this in the news many times, uh. And also Chindon County has a exceptionally low rental vacancy rates. This is twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two, but I don't think it's really gotten any better. I don't, I don't have the, uh, current number. Um. Yeah, the majority of renters in Chindon County are now spending over thirty percent of their, uh, household income on rent. Uh, and a twenty-seven percent is spending over fifty percent, uh, pretty straight. So. Yeah, and all this comes, we're going to get to municipal housing targets somehow, you, this, this plan is going to have to, um. To, to show an effort to address that. This is not, these numbers I've just put together, this, this is a, this is a. You know, how we've been doing over the last five years in, in terms of housing production. There's a number of, uh, units permitted, uh, every year. And there's, there's a lag and also the number that, that's actually built is lower because sometimes you pull permits, um, and you don't actually fill it forward. Yeah, or, or there's some, there's some loss, uh, some units that are lost, uh, demolished, that, that's, uh, partially replaced. So. I'm thinking that the, the numbers that we're, we're going to get are going to be. They're going to require about a hundred to two hundred new units per year. Um. This is, uh, th- this is what's, uh, we're looking at right now. So, yeah, housing is going to be a big topic, um, gonna have to spend a lot of time on it. The future land use map is going to be very much related to. The, uh, the talk about act of fifty reforms and, and, uh, and, uh. The, uh, place, uh, the, the context-based jurisdiction. So the, the change in the act of fifty rules that for that will be based on. Whether municipality or areas, uh, considered a tier one A or tier one B or, or whatnot. Um. So. I think the relationship between these, the regional land use map, which CCRPC is working on. And we'll, we'll be trying to finalize within, um, by mid-year. And how that gets implemented at the municipal level is that, you, you're going to see from CCRPC's, um. Uh. Draft map, that's, there, there aren't, there, there's not going to be very many colors on their map within Essex Junction. It's just probably going to be one or two different areas. It's very high level, it's very generalized, and you can, uh, the, the, through the comprehensive plan, there's, um, an opportunity to. Dive into a little more detail and have a, be a little bit more fine-grained, um. And you could even go more fine-grained in the, um, in the zoning map, even though right now the zoning map. And the comprehensive plan, uh, future land use map for Essex Junction is the same. Um, kind of defeats the purpose to, to, to have it that way, but, uh, but I think. Best practice would be to have something that's, that's higher, that's like mid-level at the comprehensive plan and more detailed than the, um, actual zoning regulations. Um. I think there needs to be work on the energy plan, um, because right now the enhanced energy plan is joint with the, uh. Uh, with the town and the town is making their own town-specific enhanced energy plan. Um. Economic development, um, I mean, there's been a lot of talk about that already and, and, and with transportation, um. The big question here is just that, are there other topics, um, high-level topics that, that, uh, the planning commission should. Be prepared to, uh, spend time on, um, throughout this comprehensive plan process, you know, Gina, if you have any other. Way to point this in that direction.
Yeah, I mean, this, um. The other things I'll just point out, your current comprehensive plan was pre-decision, merger, separation, merger, separation, merger, separation. And it, uh, in a similar way to our new six pillars, the current comprehensive plan is, um, a little bit. Focused in the framework of the heart and soul. Um. I forget what those called, vision statements or something. Um, so it's certainly. Uh, the plan itself definitely needs some updating. Um, I think in terms of. Big picture, these kind of five topic areas are, seem to be likely the ones that sort of would take the most, most focus and figure out. Um, really where the community wants to go. Um, but. We thought to sort of help focus in this conversation a little bit, we would kind of start with that and just see if we, um, missed anything. Sort of big topic plus.
Well, what's not there, and will be incredible, but this state may push us there. They've been just loving pushing us for places. Um, is. How high do we want to go? Oh, hey, now, it's, it, you got, you got a year and a half to think about it because we're doing, that's all we've got. So.
Well, that's very much in housing.
And that's in housing, okay, but unless we've got a decision, the state's already said you can go next story. So what if they want to do two stories of affordable housing?
So.
State would probably drill to death, but, you know.
I think the intention of the Connect the Junction project is to provide a. Place for you folks to have enough information to make a decision on that. That's the idea.
Well.
And we don't have that yet, but the hope is that we will have that first. Um, and that'll be incorporated into the comprehensive plan in some kind of better way, but it's completely all tied together. It's tied with how are we going to do one hundred, two hundred units a year and all that.
Yes, how many units? And, yeah, I've heard lots of people say we can't solve the county's problem, you know, all on our own. This is true. It's a county-wide thing. So, but the hand planning commission's, the hand, has had their hands tied. By a decision that the council, as the village trustees made, uh, like, um. To, you know, to go there. So, um, not wanting to have to buck the system too much, although. Love these roads stop me in the town, um, is to, is to ask that question for you guys to think about it. How, how high are you willing to go?
I think Regina just gave you the answer. I think we're waiting for the, for me. Uh, we didn't do it the last round because I didn't like it being, if I remember correctly, just sort of. It's six or seven stories here and there's a house. Um, my hope from some of the T O D projects, to get much finer, a much finer look. At how we can buffer some of these things, because I think that's what the community actually wants. They want to see creative development where you might start next to a single-family home neighborhood, two or three stories, and you might build. As you build away from it, even in a single building, for instance, so that you're not looming over. Um, my concern in the previous LDC discussions was around those buffer areas. Um, so we had quite the conversation. Couple years in a row on this, for a few months especially, around building type. Um, I'm very open personally to going higher, but I want to see how this project comes in first, you know, what that means for those areas specifically. And, but, well, you've been running that conversation a moment, I have.
Well, yeah, I was responsible for, Laurie Hilton and I were responsible for. Capping it where the Queen Street building is now, Pearl Street building, so. Times have changed, rules have changed, and I agree, we need to see what it comes from the state on that.
So, um, a couple of comments here. One is, uh. We at the planning commission have asked for this to a meeting for a while. Um, and I think, uh, we're at a point now with the LDC amendments and so on, how we were thinking about what we want to do. In the future, what, what should we focus on? What are the priorities of the council? Um, the comprehensive plan obviously is a priority, and I like the way Chris has broken it out, um, and I just wanted to add a few things. Because I came prepared tonight to talk about what my priorities would be if we move forward. First of all, a couple of things is, um, some of you know I'm on the Rural Resilience and Adaptation Subcommittee for the Vermont Climate Council. And the Climate Action Plan is now with the council, based on the five subcommittees that drafted, or three subcommittees drafted. Actions and strategies for the council to consider. actions and strategies for the council to consider. Um, I own the Rural Resilience and Adaptation Subcommittee came um and mostly from the Climate Action Office at the A N R is a requirement, not a requirement, it's a guidelines and 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 a framework will be prepared for how to incorporate hazard mitigation planning and climate adaptation or climate change into municipal planning. So that it will, the old uh Climate Action Plan had a requirement that municipalities had to have a climate action plan. I think South Burlington has one, I'm not sure if Burlington has one, but to me and for us to us, it was a requirement that wasn't necessary. So, right now, what they're talking about is developing some guidelines that would be incorporated into municipal plan. Those are probably gonna come out next year, early next year. So, January twenty twenty six, so that would be in the next fiscal year. Um, it would be obviously incorporated into this comprehensive plan. So, just FYI. Um, the other thing, Tim and I talked about this when we went to Beta Technologies. Priorities for the energy, um, energy focus of of the community is weatherization, and it's a high priority for the state, um, just like we have a housing needs crisis. Um, and we need seven thousand new homes a year to meet the target. Um, the target for weatherization in the state is a hundred and twenty thousand homes by twenty thirty. Um, actually, I think it was by twenty twenty six, but anyway, in this time period, uh forty thousand have been done. If you look at Essex Junction, um, the data I got from the R P C is, uh, I think we've done about it's 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 a little bit confusing. The town of Essex has done six hundred and twenty over the last three years. I think Essex Junction has probably done about forty-five, fifty. So, for for me, the one of the priorities is to get handle on where we wanna go with the energy focus of this pretty quickly because it feeds into um existing programs at the state level. We don't know what's gonna happen with the weatherization adaptation or uh the weather assistance program. Um, it's slated under tw- Project Twenty Twenty Five to be killed. If it is, there won't be any more funding for the state, but right now we have funding under the WAP program to move forward. So, my suggestion is, again, this is about volunteers. We don't have an energy subcommittee or a committee, we don't have an energy committee. Um, I know that there's two issues. One is it's three thousand dollars at the committee, and the other one is staff time to monitor and support the committee. Um, one thing I'd like to see us focus on is possibly getting together a a working group, it's called, um, of volunteers that would work with the planning commission on what we wanna go with energy, so that we don't get caught down the road not complying with state requirements as they move forward. Um, so, that's that's one thing that I'd like to see as we move forward. And again, I thought this meeting was gonna be more of a discussion about what the priorities for the council and what the planning commission commission should focus on. If we have another meeting, um, as you suggested, Raj, maybe that we could spend some more time talking about priorities. That's just my priorities. Um, I'm sure the people in the planning commission have priorities as well.
Well, I'd I'd like to see if all the head components of the comprehensive plan, we concentrate on, yeah, it's I've experienced in in my day that, um, depending on who was on the planning commission and who was the account again, the staff member, depending on where we focused and how much focus we didn't do. So, sometimes the comprehensive plan was punted and something was sometimes updated, sometimes it just moved on, hence the map error that you've found. Um, so, at some point in time, but we have to do pieces. I mean, we can always ask the school district to to write us a note again, which is what they did last time. But this time, energy and some of the other things are a little more critical. We need some time to get those pieces in here. Because the comprehensive plan is a vision of where we're seeing things, but we don't even have boots in the ground to even get started unless we start sharply and try to convince people, let's say, a pick on is very boring here, maybe it's on economic development in the past, unless we get people and say, okay, now that that committee of all appears and say, hey, let's get together and start talking about this. You know, where can we go with it? Because we aren't going to have those components. We don't have a vision. We don't have a inkling of where we're going to go and take it from where it is now to where are we going to go. We've got an LDC and usually comprehensive plans leapfrog that LDC to take it forward again um the next time going through. So, which means, yes, the reports, you know, the T O B, that we've got the strategic plan where people have talked about it, we've got some components, but we haven't talked about the components. We don't have a vision for where are we going to take those components. So.
I guess in my mind, I don't see that different than the vision that the community just put together.
Well, if we could go with the strategic strategic vision, okay, and put that in there and say, where can we go, but we need to flesh things out. It's it's not just, well, yeah, here's this report and we throw it in there. We actually have to believe we're supposed to answer some questions of ourselves as to where are we going to go next, what's our vision? And when we haven't done that, that's that's what happens with the comprehensive plan. We need to put that vision together.
I I think.
Uh, Lynn Snacks.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you. Um, something I'm noticing about both the strategic planning all pillars and the comprehensive plan and looking at the previous, the the current comprehensive plan. Back when we did Heart and Soul, one of, we we agreed that the trustees agreed to bring the the core values from the heart and soul process there in the comprehensive plan. And one of them was um health and recreation. And I just wanna point out what I'm not seeing in the comprehensive plan at all, and that I haven't seen is human services. Even though that is not LDC-based or zoning. Um, it is a key part of what makes a community livable. And our residents don't have anywhere to go in Essex Junction for human services. They go to Burlington. But we have unhoused people in our community, we have substance use disorder. Um, CHIPS is the only organization I can think of that really addresses any of this. And CHIPS is underfunded and focuses on teens and queens. So.
Community justice.
Oh, community justice. Thank you.
We're several hardware facilities.
Um, but but you see what I'm saying, like Cox isn't here, Outright Vermont's not here, Spectrum's not here. I I personally believe that human services should be one of our pillars, um, and at least should be in the comprehensive plan. And you were asking what's missing? That's what I'm saying is.
I I it's on my list to bring up. I, we did a really interesting look when um we were clearing out Afghanistan, a bunch of leaders, got community leaders and representatives got together to see what we could do to bring people here. I mean, very, very, very unfortunately, quickly realized that we have nothing to offer. I don't mean that as it sounds. We had no place to house anyone. We had no services to offer in terms of what was needed at the time and um that has definitely stuck with a bunch of us, just like you're just like talking about. Um, that's not to say that the community hasn't stepped up when it's been needed. We did, this community in the front end did an awful lot during the pandemic, other things that happened.
And we had.
We do have very quiet power facilities that serve people here. We have the community ju- community health center that's moved in, which is quietly wonderful. Um, but we don't have any of that. And we have talked about trying to incorporate what we all did as a community before we set in, which was put one percent to human services of the of the budget, which the town is still doing. Um, that's a different topic, but um, but yeah, that's and I don't know how you incorporate all that into the comprehensive plan in terms of the layers that you're dealing with. Um, but when we're talking about housing, um, especially, we're talking about affordable housing, um. How do we hold some of those thoughts into, where does that all fit in this? Um, and I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to get my head around what you were saying earlier about we need to do this, this, and this. And maybe I'm just confused, but I thought that was part of the work of doing it, and this isn't especially true. This isn't my thing. Um, so I'm just trying to catch up with what you have ahead of you.
It is, it's part of our work, but usually it's facilitated by having an energy committee or an economic committee or so, uh, maybe perhaps now to become a lane piece, like human services committee or component or whatever, and those right now don't exist. So, there's a lot of uh gaping holes where before, when I lasted the comprehensive plan, we could pick pieces out, like I, you know, I could pick this, ask the superintendent, yes, I need a statement from the school. Okay, and these are the questions I need to answer. And I hand it over to the superintendent and say, thank you very much. We'll we'll get the response from you, blah, blah, blah. Okay, just pick on them. And we're, I can't do that for energy because we don't have, you know, we are the housing commission at the moment, okay? Because there, you know, at one point in time, there was a housing commission when we were joint, but that's not there anymore. There are two individuals who are very interested, but they need more people than they get a commissary committee. Um, so, it means working on those components as the body of five here, plus whoever else we can round up. So, that's my concern.
If I could, if I could build on that, I'm sort of laying it in after before, but um. But twenty, August twenty twenty seven seems like a long ways away. It's not a long ways away when it takes a lot of volunteer work and organizing to get things done. So, I'm just wondering in terms of next steps, I mean, again, trying to come back to Diane's point and getting some guidance from the council on where we wanna move forward, but it would be good, I think, to get sort of a timeline of when things need to be done. Um, I don't know what the municipal grant process is. Is that an open end thing, Chris, or is it time, time base?
I think uh uh the application is due sometime in April.
Okay. There's also um a couple of other funds that we might be able to tap into as well on the state, but the point is if we could get some timeline about when when things have to be done, you know, so August twenty twenty seven, how much further back do you have to be for public warning? How much, are we gonna engage the public? And what's, what kind of subcommittees or task forces or task groups or working groups do we need? Um, I, and and maybe that's something that we should be doing. Maybe the planning commission should be focusing on this and trying to give you guys an idea with Chris and Regina, of course, about the timeline would look like. But I I'm just don't wanna get caught in a year from now saying, oh, my God, I gotta get this done. Um, and I, sorry, the the current comprehensive plan, if you look at that, there's so much in there, but about half of it is stuff that's really not implementable. It's like continue to work with the business community to illustrate blah, blah, blah. It's not an action. And I think that what we need to do is focus on actions um that are achievable and and starting from the six pillars. You know, and like public services could include human services, you know, so it's it's just a question of how we're gonna address this. And I don't wanna get caught a year from now saying, oh, my God, what are we gonna do as opposed to thinking a little proactively about it?
Amber. You have to hand up. You're done? Okay.
Well, I guess, go ahead.
Um, I mean, just on the timeline, this is, I mean, people do comprehensive plans all the time. It's uh typically gonna take you about two years of time. So, you're still not there yet. That's August twenty twenty five, and you've got a hopefully a connect the junction project to finish first in theory.
Oh, I did differ that last time we had a comprehensive plan, LDC, we can't trust me, so the council sat on it for a year. So, we don't have time to have sit on it for a year because if it takes us a year, this is now the end of fiscal twenty twenty five. And the work.
Dana, we're barely, we're in the middle of it.
No, we're not. No, we're not. Right now, I'm working on having a vote.
I guess I'm trying to, I guess I'm trying to figure out what you're asking. I'm I'm confused as to what you're asking us for.
The answer is, is that if you, as Scott mentioned, if we back that up, okay, we have, it it dies in August twenty twenty seven. But we have to have you approve it by before the deadline. So, how long, and there has to be so many hearings, at least two hearings beforehand, so if we back up that calendar, we're we're definitely at the beginning of 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 twenty twenty seven, if not even sooner, even December twenty twenty six. So, you know, it's, it just, it's around the corner. Um, and so if there's time to talk about things, it's, we need to start talking about things now. But um, you know, it's, you know, I fear, okay, just like with the LDC and the comprehensive plan, is that if it expires, we start from scratch. I don't think we can do that. It isn't just, or at least that was my vision last time, is that you've got, you know, you've got your base to go from, but it it's, it expired, so now you need to build everything again. Um, so I don't wanna go through that process of having to have to go and say, okay, everything is not just updating. It's now, okay, we have to do the process of of creation, even if it is just updating.
Uh, I am confident that Chris is gonna put a timeframe together that is going to achieve a uh new comprehensive plan by August twenty twenty seven. Uh, I can tell you today, these things typically, if we're given in two years of time, that's a good amount of time. Um, and uh this will change a little bit, depending on whether we get a municipal planning grant or we don't get a municipal planning grant. Um, but the, that's generally the timeframe. And you're right, there's a whole um very clear statutory approval process um that we go through and um Chris will be able to put all that stuff together.
I am very confident that you can do that. Okay, it's just that we've got to start looking at the calendar as to where this go. My fear last time was that we were on the calendar and we were doing really well. And then suddenly, the trustees in time sat on it. And it got down to the end where it was, had to be approved, or it started over. And I don't wanna be in that boat again.
In the interest of time, I've heard you, I think Regina's heard you.
Okay.
It's, we've kind of run over. Um, one of my suggestions at this part of the conversation around the comprehensive plan was gonna be trying to get if, trying to get together every six months, but get a subgroup together quarterly to check in on how your progress is, keeping us up to date, other things that just happen to be going around, and just generally getting together. Because I think we need to just generally get together more. Yeah, um, I don't think it's realistic to expect we can do that quarterly as two big groups, but I think if we can, it doesn't even have to be the same people all the time. You know, it can just be, the planning commission, maybe members get together, and it's convenient with a couple of council members and Chris. Um, and stay in communication with the issue. Um, but maybe every six months, we do do this. Um, and try to stay in touch, uh, because there is an awful lot of work coming up. Um, and, yeah, it'd be a lot better if we do it that way, or something like that. So, it doesn't have to be that. Um, but definitely get it together more. The only other, I I don't know if this was part of the question. I think it sounds like climate's covered. Um, by the letters and everything, what you're talking about. It's also, I'll just voice that a very big priority for me is to see how that can be incorporated in this whole thing in different places. Um, especially with all the building, some other communities have been doing some really interesting work, but they've only been able to pay attention to just a little bit. But, you know, are there any energy efficiency requirements that we can put in? Are there any renewable energy requirements we can put in some of these buildings? Where where it makes sense, where the scale is enough, not to make it difficult to build, but if the scale is big enough that we can then say we can incentivize something renewable on the building or some other thing. Um, those are the kind of considerations I'm obviously also, um. I don't think you all are behind. I think we as a community have wrapped up in what she said earlier, that will be not spoken. Um, it's two words for so long that I think the community hasn't had an opportunity to kind of bring some of these topics forward and really give them the thought. And I'm hoping some of that gets incorporated in this where it's possible. And then the next one does even better. But totally hearing the, I've read it a couple of times and I can only imagine after reading it, how much work it's worth. Hearing it. Sorry.
Anything else on, on the comprehensive plan and should we move on to downtown transportation?
Done, moving on.
Moving on, okay.
So there's a memo that's, uh, that I sent to you in revised packets. We are at a point where there, where we've gone through a, a competitive procurement process to, to, uh, to select a vendor to, uh, take this to 30% design and engineering, which is necessary to get the grants obligated uh, at the federal level. The city, so to get the, to get the whole, to use the whole federal amount that, uh, that was available, $3 million, uh, there would have to be a $750,000 non-federal match. Um, and there is this downtown transportation fund grant that may be available. That's, uh, seems like a good fit. And the city could, I think there's a 20% match requirement for that, but you can use that to then match, uh, the larger grant. But if you, I would, I would need the planning commission to recommend applying for the downtown transportation fund grants and the city council to, uh, also to adopt the municipal resolution for downtown transportation fund as presented in order to, uh, in order to do this. But Regina, did you have anything to say about the whole situation in the Congress?
So, uh, the Amtrak grant is a congressionally, congress, congression, I can't say it.
Congressional delegate.
Congressional, congressionally delegated spending, um, grant. We think it's a little bit more safe um, than the other programmatic grants, which is what the Raze grant is for the Connect the Junction project. There is definitely some risk because as Chris just described, described, we are in pre-award authority stage, which, which means we are doing some preliminary work in order to get to a place to fully obligate the implementation side of the grant. All of the costs that we're incurring right now can be covered by our $750,000 that we have in the economic development fund, which hopefully will be supplanted with this downtown funding if we get it. So it's not a risk so much in the sense that we won't be able to pay the work that we're got right now. But it is a risk that something could happen to the full implementation funds. But, uh, there's not going to be clarity. So, um, I'm generally a risk adverse person, so it's very hard for me to say these words, but I think, um, the only way that we are going to be able to have a chance of using the money is to just keep the pedal to the metal, limit form.
I don't know, so. Quick question. So the funds for the consultants are coming from the economic development fund? Or is it, or is partially coming out of the grant?
This, so it is, the city has to front the costs. Uh, and, but because we have pre-award authority, anything that's under those line items that we, that we pre-author, pre-award authority for, uh, they are eligible for reimbursement once you get the grants obligated, if you can get the grants obligated.
Okay. This is another matter we can ordinary look into, but the transportation grant is considered. Uh, is it also a federal source?
No.
It's not.
Okay. That's, yeah, that, that's why it's, that's why I consider this a very good bid.
Yep.
They will also want us to build the brand.
I like pedal to the metal.
Again.
Really suspicious. I, I don't, yeah, I'd be a little fast and take chances.
I was like.
Sandwich board. You know? If I ever.
It's a certain distance.
Ever this beauty needing to use Amdrag React.
Yeah. As we waited so long.
Yeah.
Let's keep going. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Will do. Oh, yes.
I move that the planning commission recommend applying for the downtown transportation grant for the Essex Junction multimodal train and bus station improvement project.
All those in favor say aye. Any, any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the city council adopt the municipal resolution for downtown transportation fund as presented.
Second.
For you all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great motion, that's a, excellent.
We're being black.
I will pass, so I will send, um, the form out for signing electronically.
Alright. We will have to sign it.
Well, a majority of the pla- uh, of the city council needs to sign in and, uh, just the chair of the planning commission.
Alright.
So.
One. Yeah, I'll wait for him to actually.
He waits, it's gonna take a long time.
I know, when I moved in here and it was that little Vermont federal bank and then it just fallen apart.
Right.
Okay, sorry, focus.
Yeah. I'm going to move that the city council, oh wait, member updates? The council.
Um, I know we're, um, I know it's to Chris and Regina recently. Uh, I'm also a member of the Essex Rotary, so is the one here. And Greg Morgan is on here as well. Greg is the chair of our environment committee. And we have a certain amount of funds every year to spend on environmental projects. Um, it's probably in the order of about $4,000 for next fiscal year, plus some leftover from this fiscal year. Um, and we decide, and past projects have been, um, pollinator gardens. So there's one at the high school, which is going to be updated in June. There's one at the Brownell Library now, a smaller. Um, but this year we wanted to focus on weatherization. So we're starting with an education outreach thing for, uh, Rotary members, but we also wanted to see if any of the municipalities that Essex Rotary covers would be interested in using some of the funds for education outreach or some kind of, uh, in some kind of event that, um, could be sponsored, a one day thing, maybe just an educational, uh, for example, Northeast Kingdom did a fair. Um, the Renewable Energy Weatherization Fair, one day thing where they had people come in from efficiency Vermont, from, um, some of the contractors. Um, some of the outreach programs like heat, which is Northeast Kingdom. And, um, had prizes and games and stuff. So it'd be something we'd do together. We'd talk about what we could use the funds on. But we do have funds with anybody if the council is interested. For the council and the city. So just laying that out there so we can have a further discussion. It doesn't have to be immediate. It could be anytime in the next, um, eight, 10 months.
Nice.
Okay. And you're welcome. We have a meeting, um, March, May 7th. We're going to invite people in to talk about this at the Rotary. And by the way, Rotary covers city of Essex Junction plus the four towns, so Essex, uh, Westford, Jericho and Underhill. So we're also talking to the towns.
Awesome. I think just a brief update on the animated infrastructure grant application. Apparently so far, uh, the Rotary Council has identified the, the funding for this program as being negatively impacted by any federal funding. So hopefully that source is non-federal. Um, there is a applicant webinar set up for next week. Uh, which I will intend for information on top of what's available online. Um, thank you for, uh, your thoughts and input, uh, and after our last meeting, if other uh, commission members have ruminated on what we talked about and you have other thoughts about either our forum or location, I'm still would love to have that input. Uh, I have been, um, through Michael in contact with a couple of educators in the city. Um, preliminarily about engaging students, um, uh, as part of the project. We haven't been able to actually connect to speak yet, uh, but there has been interest both from, uh, a local business owner. Um, and, uh, who is a former teacher and someone who is currently, uh, one of their teachers in the SWD system. Um, so we're looking forward to connecting with them soon when we're able. Um, and again, for the council's benefit, this is just a small, uh, arts grant. There are two tiers. The city, uh, would be the applicant, the planning commission is doing work to prepare the application. Um, it's a two-part application. It's going to be quite competitive. Um, so we would need to put in a pitch. Um, and then if invited to the local application, the pitch should do April 1st. Um, and so it's just a handful of quick numbers. Uh, the, there are two types of applications. One is a plan, basically a planning design application, which is what we're currently considering. My mission would implementation award, uh, you getting one doesn't guarantee the other, but it also definitely dislues you from the other. Um, and, uh, this came up as a possibility last year. Um, the commission didn't have time to prepare an application for the deadline last year, so we're not making an effort now. And the original impetus was, uh, just talking about other communities in Chittenden County, for example, or across the state. Um, and interesting colored art, uh, that people enjoy when they're in other communities and just as part of more of like the placemaking here, especially now out of the new city, great opportunity. Um, and so, uh, that's, yeah, kind of, I haven't answered a question about it, but that's what that means about it.
I'd really hear this because, I don't know if you noticed, but we applied for that grant before.
I didn't.
So 2016, 17?
Yeah.
Um, Iowa was working with McClure moving that is right up against the bike path.
Yeah.
And they are willing to let a mural be put on their wall.
It's great to look.
And so we applied for, uh, and the.
What's it, admitting infrastructure.
Admitting infrastructure grant, didn't make it past the first round.
Yeah.
But I would check with the McClures, see if they're still willing to allow a mural to put up there. You know, which is a great story.
So the, the planning grant is only $5,000. Um, and of that, only 20% or $1,000 can be used for admitting. Um, and, and outreach engagement. So, uh, that said, I think the council is part of our interest in public engagement generally, uh, is looking for creative ways to potentially or hopefully associate significant sizable, uh, public engagement. And that's where one of the initiatives has been to engage the students, um, in, in, uh, city schools, um, to their artistic program.
So, do you want to talk about the, what's on the other side that was recommended by the consultant?
Oh, yeah, ten web pages you saved in this. Uh, so the, the original, like, not the original, but the most recent iteration, when this came up last year, uh, uh, was, um, conversation around the retaining wall when you're coming, or you're just across the bridge, I didn't know, on Park Street.
Oh, yeah, please do something about that.
So it's way, you know, in that.
Let us do that. And you want to know how much for the.
Because that's, that's upon public property. It's not necessarily excluded, but in terms of how competitive the program is, with, with the, the focus on more kind of public infrastructure. Trying to find a location that is kind of public infrastructure in the city.
That wall is public? It doesn't belong to the house?
It does. So, so we're trying to move on to the location. So.
The house is dead. Have a, have a. So let's just buy some painting.
So, yeah, that, that is a recent deal, but in terms of the application.
Can't get it on the hard time.
Of course, no, we pay the artists, but like, what's, I guess. Like this. No, I'm sorry, you're paying the artists.
Give her a hand up, just so you know.
I know, I was just gonna say.
But she's gonna shut you guys down. She is.
She is.
No, we're not.
Got it, Regina.
Any other comments?
You know me so well.
I know, it's coming up to bed soon.
I'm, I'm only, I, I appreciate the conversation, but Regina knows where I was going. This is, this wasn't warned as a, as a discussion about this. So I just want to bring it back to the, the member updates, but thank you, Elijah, for that.
This sounds exciting.
Well, this actually is a member update because it is part of our ongoing events.
Definitely want to learn more.
And I, I do apologize, but I would like Elijah to get out what this other property potentially is.
I mean, you may have noticed, uh, in the, some of the renderings from the initial community work, when they were doing downtown hypotheticals, uh, was they included a mural on the southern face of the fire station. Basically, this side right with the library.
That sure beats the last time when we all painted it.
Still looking for other possible recommendations or locations, but the McClures is a great tip, but specifically if council or anyone out there listening or reading the minutes as for, uh, basically public infrastructure in the city, uh, that could be the subject of artworks. Doesn't necessarily have to be a mural, but that's kind of our initial.
Yeah.
Just, but if there are other forms of art in public space related to public infrastructure, so.
To make everyone happy, if I have some ideas, I'll reach out to separately.
Another time.
And include everyone. If you like.
At least the fireworks. Your ladder.
Any other member comments from anyone? Alright, I will go to council staff. Thanks.
I don't have anything else.
I will, council adjournments.
Certainly.
Great, all those in favor say aye.
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 Great, we're adjourned.